I wonder. Almost still want to congratulate. You're kind of strung out there a little bit.
Bring this meeting to order. Bring this meeting to order with the town board and planning board for July 1st, 2021. Everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our agenda tonight, as it was posted in the town board and the town website, and there has been a change to it, and we'll mention that as I go along. Number one, Lord Avenue property site plan and minor subdivision. This has been adjourned to our next meeting scheduled for July...
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth. By request of the applicant. Number two on our agenda is the Harbor Break Tool Site Plan. This applicant seeks to construct approximately a 1,500 square foot retail building and parking lot on property located at 2045 Music Road, TNK Y Troy LLC is the applicant. Okay, our first item on our business agenda is the review and approval of the minutes on the last meeting, June...
Seventeen.
Seventeen? This was a joint meeting as far as a joint public hearing with the Attorney Board of Appeals. We had, and they had a special meeting called for that purpose. The minutes reflect also the public hearing comments in our regular business meeting. So everybody had an opportunity to look at those? Any changes, amendments, comments? If your hearing done, I will make a motion to approve the minutes as they have been submitted.
A second.
There's a second. Any word of discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, one note before we get to our only agenda item at this point. In regards to the Lord Avenue site plan and minor subdivision, everybody received a copy of a petition to close Duncan Lane. This was submitted by the residents in that area. Subject of the petition is to build closure of Duncan Lane at the intersection of Duncan Lane and North Ford Street and Adesaga Avenue. We agree the other side of requesting the closure of the government intersection for the safety and loving of the people living in the surrounding neighborhood, including Jersey Street, North Ford Street, and Adesaga Avenue. This is response to the plan, Hannaford Market on Lord Avenue and Dunbar. We're just going to acknowledge, we see to this. This will be forwarded to the town board for their discussion. We obviously have no jurisdiction on the streets or anything like that. But I just wanted to let you know that we did receive them. I would keep these confidential.
Right, well certainly you could keep them in your file on the project. We'll note for the record that if they were submitted, they were signed with the intent on submitting them to the town, they do, they have personal identification in there, which they foiled, would most likely be redacted, so just note that. You should have them in your position as secret lead agency on the project because it does, it is relevant on the issue of traffic impacts, but at this point, just keep them within your file.
Would it be appropriate to return them for further distribution to town board? Or should we have?
Oh, you should have them.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Next item on our agenda was the Harbor Break Tool Site Plan.
Good evening, Joe Dannable with the Environmental Design partnership. Here on behalf of TNK Y, their application for proposed 15,600 square foot building to be located on Hoozick Street. We were in front of the board early June of this year. At which time, we presented a site plan. We had some discussion at that site plan. No action was taken at that meeting, as we had to go through engineering review. Requesting to get some comments and feedback from the fire department. Since that time, we have received an engineer review letter from Mr. Bonesteal. We've also received comments from the fire department provided by Chuck Goldman. We have reviewed all of the comments, both by, provided by the TDE and by the fire department. We believe all those items are technical in nature. We did go through quite detail, a letter provided by Mr. Bonesteal. We have prepared a full written response to those letters. Certainly, we haven't submitted that, as there would have been no time to fully review them as part of this application, but look to submit them ahead of the August public hearing that we're looking to get scheduled. We've also updated the full environmental assessment form at the request of the comments provided by the town designated engineer. I'll be very brief in my presentation tonight, and not a lot has changed since the previous meeting. And engineering comments, fire department comments. Overall site plan, we are looking for a site plan approval. We're looking for a waiver of subdivision regulations, as we are deeding a small portion of land to the BMW dealership to our east, so that their access road is entirely within their property. Also, we're looking to consolidate two parcels totaling, for a total of seven acres, combining them into one parcel, which will house the overall development. So that is the two, possibly three actions that we're both looking for from this board. Papers are a little sticky from the meeting. Overall site plan remains relatively the same. We've made a few slight modifications. One, we pulled both of our basements, basins completely out of the 100-foot adjacent area. Those basins will be fenced with a chain link, lac coated chain link fence for safety. We did adjust the landscaping in the front of the building to provide the balance from one side to the other that the planning board was requesting, with a couple larger shrubs in the center, which will be in front of the center, Red Pier facing Hoozick Street. Other than that, the plans themselves have remained relatively the same. Just to update you on some of the agencies that we've contacted since our previous meeting, we have submitted a stage one application to New York State DOT for the proposed curb cut. We have also submitted our application to the New York State DEC for the impacts to the 100-foot land adjacent area. As we receive correspondence from those agencies, we will be sure to share them with the town and the town staff. Here we have updated the elevations of the property. Previous meetings, there was discussions about the colors of the building, the grays and the reds. As promised, we have, we have acquired samples of the materials that will be used on the building. Pass these around for the board's review. Our observation. The red portions of the building, Ephesus material, sanded, and the gray, light gray block with the sand on it. I forget the color.
Correct color is lattice. We have literally linked correctly on the lattice plan. It's a lattice color.
So again, the overall building is the split face block painted with the lattice, and then the main entrance and the center entrance have the red Ephesus material, and then we have the faux windows, spandrel glass windows on the Route 7, Hoozick Street side of the building, as well as the west side of the building, which faces the main parking lot and entrance. With that, if there's any more comments of the board, we're certainly willing to address them, simply to see. And then ultimately, what we're looking for this board to do is declare themselves lead agency and schedule a public hearing for the August 15th. Thank you.
Obviously, one of the big discussions we had in our last meeting was the color of the building and everything like that. I'm a little bit confused, to be honest with you. I understand where the red is. The lattice is going for the entire building?
Yeah, so the two materials are the red, certainly the Ephesus, and the remainder of the building, both the eastern facade, southern facade, and...
Entire building?
Entire building. The entire building is the gray.
You've only got the four elevation shown, but they're not City Street or Haverly. But all four sides of the building will be painted with the lattice gray, as we've seen samples. They'll be best to bring in samples, so you can actually see what color it's painted. When you print something in color, it's probably best.
Yeah, you know, what confuses me is, I think we initially were talking about a dark gray or black building. If I'm correct, that's not the case.
No, that's not the case. This is your true color right there. It's always best to bring in the samples, so you can actually see.
Okay.
Stu, give me a...
This is...
This is where we had started, the own board, and we lightened it up for the board's request.
Oh, okay, all right. So we did start out with a very dark color.
Yeah, and that was mostly the picture, because it was, we actually called it a gray and stuff. This is the actual, this is the purple colors that Harbor Break has established, that this is their newest version, this is the building in my photograph. It's not necessarily that red and that gray. The entire building will be painted gray, with the exception of the areas that define the actual gray.
Well, in preparation for this meeting, one of our members, Kevin, went around online and got a bunch of pictures of different Harbor Breaks. And there was nothing in these that was like black, that we were under the impression of are almost a very dark gray.
Yeah.
And that's what prompted us to question, you know, we don't want that building, we don't want that building. But my personal opinion is, you know, that's fine.
Great.
So, but, I mean, I'm gonna open it up to discussion, but I mean, you know, that's why I looked at that, I thought it could be the whole building, and I said, what's the problem?
We did sense when we were leaving last time that there was some confusion about what true color was, like those samples.
Excellent, excellent choice. Thank you. I appreciate you doing it. So also, why we discuss this with the amongst ourselves right now, the building. I know there was a lot of concerns about it. I know Linda, she photographed one, brought it in, and I think it was probably more similar to that, wasn't it?
I think so.
Yeah. And then Kevin, he went through and there's gotta be at least a dozen or so photographs of different ones. None of them, we picked up anything that was more than thought. So, I'd like to open it up to the person in discussion here. In lieu of what we've seen tonight, these are an issue with the appearance of the building. If you could explain to me one more time how you're going to accentuate the front of the building, you've got some false windows there.
These are faux windows. Put a real window in here, like the back of the sales kitchen, which is not what you want here. So these are spandrel glass, so they will look just like a regular window in the street. This area here is the driver, that'll be here in here, Hoozick Street, and on the parking lot side here. This driver is, broad enough for purposes, it'll, if this is the front of the building, it'll be approximately eight inches tall off of this, unless a usual building elevation change. And this is what's made out of the driver. There's a, this here, if you see this little stripe here, that's actually just a ponti, it goes over for the letter, that'll be probably the same color as the building itself, the lattice gray.
So it won't be red?
No, this won't be red. It's a ponti.
It's a ponti.
It's just a small standard scene, standard scene type of a, metal lining.
Oh, it's a ponti.
Yeah, it's not flawed. It's not flawed. So it'll be the gray color that you have here.
And then the side facing Hoozick Road.
That's here.
Yep, that, you know, you're talking about the false windows there.
Yeah, spandrel glass in the three locations.
And the landscaping will be...
Landscaping is not on this, but I think, did you have it on the other?
They do have it on the other plane. What we are proposing is to show you the elevation.
They're here, so that puts it along here.
Landscaping here, landscaping here, and then landscaping below the window, all below the window elevation, it looks like a appropriate foundation plan.
These balance the two corners, this anchors the center.
I wasn't clear on once in the middle of the hall.
No, they'll stay below the windows, be lower, probably evergreen kind of shrub in the first.
I think last time you were here, I mentioned some existing trees that were shown on the existing plan, probably now.
Unlikely they will survive, just because of utilities all being brought in, break through the systems.
So the southern elevation, the small picture you have there, that's not a real entrance?
That is not an entrance. That's just a spandrel glass. That's a spandrel glass, and so is this. This is, one door is for fire egress, the other one's just for the sprinkler riser. This is the actual entrance. These two areas here, this is for the loading dock itself, with the tractor trailer to load over the period of day. This is the customer service entrance, where a forecourt can be able to bring a heavier item out, just somebody's pickup, for example, deliver something, not to then do it at the front, that would be something interesting.
That's recessed back from the corner of the building.
Yes, they are, exactly. You can see it here, that goes way back. Way back. This is, this is 90 feet, and this is 20, so that's back 70 feet. So it's not...
There's a tractor trailer in there, not even see it.
Yeah, you will never see it then. It's back there. And then just move the trailer, we don't need a cabinet.
And the site lighting, is that, is that in compliance with the town board?
Yes.
No lights in the building. No area lights on the building.
Just the security lights on the parking lot side, but I don't agree with on that. We just have one security light over the fire.
Security lights were area lights. No area lights in the building. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
The area lighting, this is your security lighting?
It's just a light that shines down over the driveway.
Oh, okay, all right, down some of it.
Not area.
Gotcha.
Yeah, no, it doesn't project out, it's just a...
Accent or security.
Okay, that's good.
Do you have lights in your parking lot?
I'm sorry?
Do you have lights in your parking lot?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, they're gonna be LED downward directional at a mounting height that's consistent with the town code, which I believe is in 15.
15, yeah.
Will they be on continuously during the night?
Not unless that's an ordinance, no.
What's that?
If that's an ordinance, that can be accommodated, but it would not be on all night long. Generally, they have the lights turn on an hour after they're closing, and then they get back on. They've got what's known as an E energy management system. They can control both in the store or in the corporate office, to make sure these things are always going on certain lights. One time, they might have lights on during the night, or the station, for employees if they had the command during the night, on over the trailer or something, that came in at night.
So you have local override with that?
Yes.
I would assume that they're, based on the letter we got from Dunbar, from one fire company, that there are no issues or anything with it.
I read that today, there's no issue, yeah, those are the reasons.
I would assume that they already reviewed all the turning raises and parking lot, so forth and so on. Is there any question about access to the back of the building for fighting fire?
No.
They didn't comment on it, it's one of the things I was looking for. There was no comment from the chief.
Those are the driveway or the max on the BMW? Doesn't that, do that suffice for part of the building?
Driveway's here, comes this way, it can come back this way. If they had to, they could. I don't think fire code actually requires that, because there's lots of, just old buildings with steel, and it is sprinkling. So it doesn't give any other fire codes to solve some of those issues.
Yes, for New York State Fire Code, you need to have, fire apparatus access within 300 feet of all portions of the building, sprinkling through the building. Building being 90 feet deep by 200 feet long, that knows no more than 200 feet from any point of the parking lots of the building, which certainly needs that access.
Okay.
Are you gonna do solar on the roof?
There is no plan to do that, no.
Fire pump is wanting to know if you do. There's solar on base on there.
Yes.
The only thing I have to mention is that you have a number now. The folks that do assign the 911 numbers have assigned 841 to this site.
Yes, I'm correct, Eric. Did the application still reflect 845?
Yeah.
Well, let's get back to, is there any further discussion on the outside appearance of the building? I know we went through a lot of discussions, I'm not sure if it's more or less based on maybe some misconceptions, and our fault, I believe, that. I apologize for that. Is there any more discussion on that? No, I would like to say, I appreciate you bringing in this call or something. That cleared up a lot of questions that we had.
Did you talk about trying to connect the sidewalk to the sidewalk of the building?
Was that this part of the talk about that?
I think we did. We did talk about that, and we did agree to do that.
Okay.
That'll be reflected. So we will be submitting a new set of plans addressing the engineer's comments, as well as the fire department's comments, in advance of the public hearing that we're asking to be set for August 15th.
We'll be bringing this straight out.
Sure.
If we have to move the monument side left to right, that will be, that's a little hard to slip around, so it'll be a straight shot, it's a little easier access to the site.
Perfect. I have a question for Andy at this point. Lead Agency?
So, on that issue, the notice of lead agency went out June 14th, so the 30 days that's allowed under the regs is not expired. I know the planning board received a response from DEC, one of the involved agencies. We have, to my knowledge, received a response from DOT or any other involved, so at this meeting, be premature to declare lead agency. Certainly, your meeting on the 15th.
That would cover the 30 days.
Correct. So that'd be appropriate for action on the meeting on 15th.
Okay. And reviewing the engineering notes and the plans, I want to make sure that, you know, the material that we would present for a public hearing to the public is as complete as possible. A lot of those things need to be addressed by our meeting on the 15th?
We need to resubmit them to the town and have appropriate amount of time for Wayne to review them.
Okay.
The thought was, we would submit time for the August 5th meeting to make sure that all of the engineer comments are addressed. We have them addressed, we have them provide great comments. We haven't submitted them to the town yet, but if we could submit them, probably submit them as soon as tomorrow, if that would be that time to be reviewed for meeting on 15th, that would be the time we have the public hearing.
Well, I was talking to Andy today, and we were talking about, the reason, once we determine that everything's acceptable, generally speaking, we'll schedule a public hearing for, not the next meeting, but the meeting after, because we have half proper time to notice if there's been all of this discussion before. However, between 15th and August 6th, is it 4th, 6th, 5th? It's actually a three-week period. It could be technically properly noticed to have the public hearing on the 5th instead of the 19th. Just pointing that out, because that all is contingent on material being, you know, submitted, reviewed, and everything like that. That's why I asked you whether you could get the stuff through us. So, I'm just offering as an option. Certainly, your game plan, if that works for you, it works for us, but we're just saying that if you were to, you know, hustle along, it is possible that we could have public hearing, a meeting before the 2nd.
If I'm following you correctly, we will come back for the 15th.
Come back for the 15th.
Resubmit these plans with the updated AF in response letter to the town immediately.
Right.
Come back for the 15th meeting, at which time we'll have an updated letter from the town's engineer, saying that we've addressed...
No, I think it's a little simpler, which is, if you could simply respond to Wayne's comments and the comments of fire department, I don't know that there's any outstanding planning board comments. Resubmit to Wayne and the board members, just for purposes of their review and discussion at the meeting on the 15th, because the board does like to determine that the application materials are complete, they address the comments, and at that point, I think the board would be inclined to schedule a public hearing, but because of the calendar benefit here, this three-week gap, that could still be held for public hearing on August 15th.
Yeah, we're looking for August 15th, so if we do make that happen...
Don't anticipate another round of Wayne Bonesteal comments prior to the 15th. All I think the board is looking for is time for Wayne to review your revised plan and your responsive comments for the meeting on 15th. Is that correct, Wayne?
Yeah, as long as you respond to our comments by the 15th and address comments in this comment letter. I don't typically like to re-review and twice review and triage review plans. I like to do it thoroughly once, you address the comments, then you should be in pretty good shape. Sometimes, we do a little back and forth with stormwater, because it's usually the most technical issue that we come across on these site plans. That's okay. We haven't commented on anything that would be material to change the site plan, we're not changing size or anything. We agree conceptually with the design, just had to work out some details and get some stuff clarified.
That certainly works for us.
Okay.
What about the county? Can't tell them from now, right?
We should send them, so as soon as you let those in, the building department will forward them to the county for review, and then indicate if the board's inclined to do it, that through the public hearing on August 15th, and all likelihood, the county's comments would be your letter of public hearing.
When is the county, county planning board on, so we're talking about?
No, the rest of the county, it's just the county plan and the agency, so they'll get them and they review them, you know, meeting schedule there, and they'll get those reviewed in the center.
Yeah, 30 days.
They do have 30 days under the law, but in general, once you... They do have 30 days under the law, but in general, once you let them know there's a public hearing on the 15th, they do, they're pretty good at getting their comments together.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions? That would be pretty well clear on the timeline for the meeting. We'll see you on the 5th, the 15th of July.
That's correct.
And hopefully, we get everything wrong.
Beautiful. Thank you, board.
Once again, thank you for clarifying, making sure everyone...
Might be helpful to bring those back.
It's a new business, we had one, new business. That is a waiver. Waiver of subject reason, submitted by Vincent, and this property is located on the Long Creek Road. It is west of Maple Avenue, coming out of Eagle Mill. It is two lots, the owner of, let me see if I have this straight, 494, purchased 486. There was a house on that property, is that correct? It was taken down?
Yes, it was demoed. There was a cat hoarder that lived there.
Okay. It was taken down, and the only thing that was brought to my attention on this was, there are two abandoned leach fields on the property being annexed to the other. I don't know if they were, they put on there or not, but we had some discussion about it, and it seemed that, since they weren't gonna build anything on the property, they were just gonna annex it on that, that it wasn't completely relative to the waiver. Would that be a, is that the way I'm putting it?
Yeah, what we discussed was the fact they're abandoned, septic fields, tile fields, and their relevance to the waiver. I mean, I think the issue with the lot line adjustments is on the active and operating septic systems for appropriate setbacks, but if it's confirmed, these are abandoned, I'm not sure that's relevant, like, for instance.
County Health Department does have a specific procedure for abandoning septic systems, that is followed, and it's not an issue. Supposedly, I'll raise that question.
The terminology the applicant gave was decommissioned. Exactly how that, exactly how that occurred.
He worked to sell that lot as a buildable lot, they couldn't use that old system, they had to.
Depends on how it was decommissioned. So he's now taking the, you're supposed to fill in the septic.
Yeah. Remove or fill in, right.
Are they taking two lots and making them one?
Just sliding the crap out of them.
Yeah, by doing 26 feet, I think, 22 or 26 feet, not much.
There'll still be a vacant buildable lot, is that what?
Yes, two acre, yeah, yeah.
I think the issue would simply be, the applicant's got to confirm that these two septic systems were properly abandoned.
Yeah.
I did not see that portion of the demo.
So let me see if I have this straight. You're gonna move the property lot, this 21.78 feet, and you're still gonna maintain the lot as a separate lot remaining, with the possibility that you could sell it as a buildable lot.
Where's this septic system?
Pardon me?
Where's this septic system?
Is this the old Curtis house?
Correct.
Right Curtis house?
Correct.
He's taking mine, he's not giving me.
Right.
So it doesn't matter.
Well, I think, except for, I think, I think it's a good point, I think we have to have him, the applicant, at least submit some type of proof that these have been decommissioned. And that if he was to sell the lot, obviously, the position of a new septic system would have to be, with the proper setbacks and everything, because this is public water here too. So I think we should notify the applicant that he can supply that for us, and then we'll put him on the agenda for our next meeting on the 15th, for formal discussion and possibly approval. This is the second lot line adjustment, is this, in two years, is that an issue?
It is a consideration for the board, so under your waiver regulations, if there's been a prior wait within the past seven years, it's something that the board can take into consideration as to whether allow the waiver to proceed or to require a minor submitted application. So it's not a prohibition, but it's a relevant issue, and we should discuss that if we're comfortable continuing to review as a waiver, or given that there was another lot line that you've seen within the last three years, could request a minor.
Let me just ask a quick question here, Chuck. What is, what is the real reason for building this lot?
I didn't get one. For 21 feet, seems barely worth it. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean...
It's not a, you know, a right away for a parcel in the back, I'm not quite sure why he's only adding 21 feet.
Is there anything that indicates on that?
There's nothing that stands out in the field, when you're out on that site.
Maybe he wants to make it a new two acre lot, I don't know.
Quite possibly.
I guess that's a question we can ask him. Is there any other issues on this? Anybody need any additional information on it?
What was the previous waiver?
They added that.
And the other question I have is, would the applicant be here, or would Rod and Michael be here? Who's been doing the...
The applicant came in with the applications. Vince came in to drop the applications off.
Okay. All right, let's put him on the agenda for our 15th, and hopefully we'll get our questions in. Is there any other new business?
That's it.
Is there any other old business? No. Okay, then, hearing done, I will entertain a motion to a hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Those are there, I'd like to make a vote. Thank you.